Good evening and welcome to the Lodi Board of Education regular meeting, October 29, 2025. Please stand for the flag salute.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Let me read the sunshine statement. In accordance with the open public meeting NJ SA 10:4-6, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Bergen Record and posting notice in the Board of Education Administration building and filing notice with the borough clerk. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Lodi Board of Education at Thomas Jefferson Middle School, 75 First Street, Lodi, New Jersey, on Wednesday, October 29, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. Roll call.
Ms. Alcala.
Present.
Mr. Batista. Mr. Canizaro.
Here.
Mr. LaFranca. Mr. Mastrofilippo. Mr. Ramos. Mr. Thomas. Dr. Seema. Ms. Cardone.
Here.
We are now going to meet an executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters. I need a motion. Second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Alcala. Or we can do all in favor. All in favor, just say aye, please. Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes fast. Thank you.
Perfect.
Oh, we're good?
We're good.
We're ready?
We're live.
Okay. I'd like to re-enter to the open public meeting. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor. Opposed?
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. Be resolved that the Lodi Board of Education approves the following minutes as submitted. Executive session, September 24th, 2025, and regular meeting, September 24th, 2025. Motion?
Roll call. Ms. Alcala?
Yes.
Mr. Canizaro? Mr. LaFranca? Mr. Ramos? Mr. Thomas? Ms. Cardone?
Yes. Okay. At this time, I would first like to welcome our new business administrator, Tom Lamb. Welcome.
Thank you.
Second, I would, not that it's second, I would like to thank Mike Rinderconnect for coming to Lodi, first of all, and for getting us where we are today. You and Frank work so wonderful together, and we will miss you, but I'm glad that we had you for two and somewhat years because you did a lot for this district. So, thank you, Mike, and we'll miss you, and good luck. Superintendent's report.
So, I have one presentation tonight, so I'm going to go over to the podium and ask Ms. Cardone to join me there. So, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October meeting. For our first order of business, I would like to acknowledge our interim business administrator and board secretary, Mr. Michael Rinderconnect. Tonight will be Mr. Rinderconnect's last meeting with the Lodi Board of Education. Interim administrators are retired, experienced professionals who are able to serve in a district for up to two years, and in some cases qualified for short extensions beyond the two-year term. Mr. Rinderconnect has served Lodi for the past 27 months. In his time with the Lodi Board of Education, Mike has proven to be an invaluable asset to our school community. He has helped manage our finances, develop financial, sound financial practices, and restore structure to our business organization. In addition to his many contributions in improving our financial practices, he has been a student-centered administrator and dedicated to partnering with principals, teachers, and district administrators to provide our students with the resources critical to their success. Whether it was assisting the board with settling contracts, collaborating on building budgets that address the specific needs of our school community, preparing school facility projects that help provide the students in our community with a safe and nurturing learning environment, or responding to emergency events like the recent flood here at TJMS, we could always count on Mike to provide sound administrative advice and guidance throughout the process. We wish him all the best as he moves on to the next journey ahead of him. Mike, if you could just join us up here for a moment?
You're not.
Sorry, you can't do that. At this time, our board president, Mrs. Cardone, and I would like to present you with a small token of appreciation in recognition of your dedicated service to the Lodi Board of Education over the past two years. It's been a true pleasure working with you, and you'll always have a place as an honorary RAM here in Lodi. Thank you for the numerous contributions you've made for our school community. It's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you. Congratulations.
I guess I'll have to say a couple words.
Well, let's just say a few words.
I don't know where, you know, listening to Frank speak, and I really, I truly appreciate all this. I don't know where the 27 months went. It's been a great pleasure working with Mr. DiAmico. I think we were a great team. We've moved mountains, and as we discussed earlier, there's many more mountains to move. I'm confident you have a very talented business administrator that's coming in, and I'm passing the torch over to him this evening, and I just want to say, this district has been phenomenal. I found it both professionally and personally rewarding, and folks keep the momentum going. That's all I can say. Thank you. I had a great time, and I appreciate everything.
Thank you, Mike. While we're certainly going to miss Mr. Rinderconnect's leadership and steady hand, we're excited to introduce someone who will carry that same spirit forward. Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce our newly-appointed business administrator, Mr. Thomas Lamb, to our school community. Mr. Lamb comes to Lodi with an extensive background in school finance with over 15 years of experience as a school business administrator. Throughout his tenure, he has demonstrated a strong knowledge of sound financial practices, comprehensive understanding of business operations of the school district. His experiences include managing the day-to-day operations of the business office, collaborating with the board and school administrators on building sound budgets, managing state and federal grants, and managing and overseeing large facility projects and operations for the Buildings and Grounds Department. We're excited to have Mr. Lamb join this administrative team here in Lodi, and we're looking forward to the future, and again, we thank Mike for everything that he's done for our students and our school community. Onto another topic, the safety of our students and staff continues to be one of the top priorities in the Lodi Public School District. On our Professional Development in Service Day on Monday, October 13th, the district hosted a school safety and security seminar. The seminar was attended by several partners in school safety and security, including Chief Donald Scorzetti and several members of the Lodi Police Department, members of the county regional SWAT team, the Burn County Prosecutor's Office, representatives from the Urban Area Secure, Security Initiative, and representatives from Hackensack Meridian Health. All staff members of the Lodi Public School District attended an interactive threat seminar hosted by members of the Tomahawk Strategic Solutions Organization. Tomahawk is an organization that provides public and private safety preparedness programs as well as law enforcement training delivered by special operations veterans, law enforcement, and tactical emergency medical professionals with decades of experience. This seminar was provided, provided participants with strategies to improve safety and security in their classrooms. It reinforced the fact that safety and security is the responsibility of all members of our school community, and that when we reflect on our practices and make conscious efforts to increase awareness, safety of our schools will become a top priority and become safer. Participants were provided with real-world strategies to increase their awareness and ability to respond during a school security incident. Several breakout sessions were provided in the afternoon that addressed comprehensive topics around school safety and security. Some of the breakout sessions included topics such as communicating during an emergency event, medical considerations and first aid, classroom preparedness, and safety considerations for large areas such as gyms, auditoriums, cafeterias, and things of that, that nature. Melium Gonzalez of Hackensack Meridian, with the assistance of the Lodi Health and Physical Education Staff, provided stop-the-bleed training to ensure that staff are able to provide first aid during a bleeding emergency. Dr. Jolene Ross conducted a session on applying science to practice, trauma-informed instructional practices. Over the years, she has been instrumental in helping our district understand the impact of trauma and how we, as educators, can adjust our approach to meet the emotional and psychological needs of our students. James Sheehan, retired law enforcement officer and program manager for the Urban Area Security Initiative, and Marie Sansone, lieutenant with the New Jersey State Police, led a session on investigative techniques for behavioral threat assessment teams, helping us better understand how to proactively identify and address early warning signs. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive, as staff reported feeling better informed to implement school safety procedures and increase their awareness and preparedness for managing a safety event. Members from the several participating law enforcement agencies, which again included the Burn County Regional SWAT Team, members of the FBI, Homeland Security, Secret Service, who were on hand, all participated in this program and applauded the Lodi Public School System on the safety and security measures that have been implemented throughout our district. They stated that they've been in districts throughout the country and that the practices that we have in place here in Lodi makes it one of the safest districts that they've seen in their travels around, so that was great news to share with our school community, and that's always been a priority and will continue to be one of our top priorities. Through shared responsibility and commitment, we will continue to ensure the safety of all of our staff. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge our partners from Laura Bishop Consultants and Mr. Nicolosi from the Lodi High School Surf Club. On October 9th, the Lodi Public School District received the New Jersey School Public Relations Association Award of Excellence for media coverage for the story featuring the Lodi High School Surf Club last year. This story garnered international coverage by The Times of London and was also featured on Fox Good Day New York, WNYC Radio, and The Gothamist. Congratulations to the Lodi High School Surf Club and to everyone who participated in that project. The last item of business that we have to discuss tonight are the state test scores from the '24-'25 school year. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which was administered in grades three through nine for ELA, in math, we test all students in grades three through nine and all students who are enrolled in algebra for the first time. In science, we test all students in grades five, eight, and 11. We also are reporting on the DLM, which is our Dynamic Learning Maps. This is an assessment that's given to certain special education students as determined by their IEPs in grades three through eight and grade 11. Some of the highlights from those assessments that I'd like to share with the board and the community are as follows. Our students scored at or above state averages in a large majority of tested areas, scoring well above state average in several tested areas. We scored significantly above the state average in several language arts assessments across all grade levels across the district. This is a significant accomplishment in and of itself, but when you take into consideration our district factor group, it's even a greater accomplishment. There are over 600 public school districts in the state of New Jersey, and in the past, the state created a system called District Factor Grouping to help compare student performance on statewide assessments across demographically similar communities. The following considerations are taken into place when assigning a DFG. Percent of adults without high school diplomas. Percent of adults with some college education. The occupational status of adults in the community. Unemployment rate in the community. Percent of individuals living in poverty and median family incomes. Districts were placed in DFGs from A through J, A being the lowest socioeconomic status and J being the highest, the most affluent districts. Lodi was categorized as a DFGB, which is in the bottom 15% when it comes to socioeconomic status across the state and those measures that I just discussed. There are approximately 87 combined districts in DFGs A and B, meaning that there's over 500 districts in the state of New Jersey that are in higher socioeconomic factor groups than Lodi is. When you take that into consideration and you take into consideration the fact that we outscored a large number of districts throughout the state, more than 50% of the districts, it's a great accomplishment. Our students are achieving despite some of the obstacles that they face, and we do a great job at providing them resources to overcome those obstacles and achieve at high levels, so congratulations to all of our students and our teachers for an amazing job on these assessments. Some additional considerations when we talk about test scores is we look closely at aggregate data to identify trends from a district and school-wide perspective. We look at things such as common areas of proficiency, areas where we can focus improvement efforts, trends across grade levels, and trends across subject matters, just to name a few. This helps us give overall consideration and make decisions on curriculum revisions to address deficiencies and areas for improvement. We look at evidence statements that show us how our students performed on specific standards. We use the results to inform decisions as they relate to the implementation of programs designed to support student achievement and accelerate learning. Interventions and instructional strategies are put in place to provide students with targeted support where they need it. We also look at disaggregated data to identify trends for specific subgroups, such as special populations, such as ESL, 504 students, special education students, and intervention and referral service students. We use the data from this analysis to provide specific support to these students, which is designed to meet their individual needs. While looking at aggregate and disaggregated data from a district and school-wide perspective is important and provides us with a lot of relevant information, the most important analysis of test results is done on a day-by-day basis by our teachers. They're looking at the individual scores and strengths and weaknesses of their students and putting in the hard work to design their instruction to meet the individual needs of each of those students, so I'd like to really applaud all of our teachers for their efforts in the classroom, day in and day out, and really go in the extra mile to make our students achieve great things, so thank you. The, and the group that deserves the most credit when it comes to our achievements on the state assessments and in the classroom is our students. They're hardworking, they're resilient, motivated, and put forth their best effort day in and day out, so congratulations to our students for their efforts. We thank you for, for everything that they do in the classroom, day in and day out as well. I'd like to just close in saying a special thanks to our whole school community for their efforts. It's not just, it's not just the students, it's not just the teachers, it's the school community. It's the board providing the resources for the teachers to make a difference in the classroom, giving them the curriculum, giving them the, the programs, and giving them what they need to succeed. So, from our board, to our administrators, to our teachers, parents, support staff, everybody chipping in to do their part to give our students the best. Congratulations, and thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight, so thank you.
We'll resume our public comment on agenda items only. Having none, we'll start our resolutions, finance, budget, and appropriations. I need a motion. Second.
Roll call. Ms. Alcala?
Yes.
Mr. Canizaro?
Yes.
Mr. LaFranca?
Yes.
Mr. Ramos?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Cardone?
Yes. Okay, moving on to personnel. I need a motion for Personnel Resolutions P1 to P11.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Yes. Yeah, just want to explain on Agenda Item P8 under Personnel, there is an amendment, so it would be approved as amended. The effective date of the resignation of Lisa Cangelosi will be changed from November 7th, which was originally on the agenda, but the approved effective date will be November Are there any questions on that?
Any questions? Any comments?
If there are not, we could do roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Personnel roll call. Ms. Alcala?
Yes.
Mr. Canizaro?
Yes.
Mr. LaFranca?
I'm going to abstain from P2 and P8. I'm confusing myself from P6 and P7.
Thank you.
And yes to the rest of them, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ramos?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Cardone?
Yes.
Up to P11.
P11. P10.
P11, sorry.
I abstain from P11.
P10 and P11.
P10 and P11.
And yes to the rest.
Yes, yes to the rest.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to curriculum and instruction. Resolution C1 dash 1, C1 dash 2. Second. Any comments?
Roll call. Ms. Alcala?
Yes.
Mr. Canizaro?
Yes.
Mr. LaFranca?
Yes.
Mr. Ramos?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Cardone?
Policies and regulations. Any discussion?
Roll call. Policies and regulations. Ms. Alcala?
Yes.
Mr. Canizaro?
Yes.
Mr. LaFranca?
Yes.
Mr. Ramos?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Cardone?
Other items. Resolution 01 dash 1, 01 dash 7. Any discussion?
Roll call. On other items. Ms. Alcala?
Yes.
Mr. Canizaro?
Yes.
Mr. LaFranca?
Yes.
Mr. Ramos?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Cardone?
Moving on to public comment on non-agenda items. Having none, move on to board comments. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you.